Good evening, welcome to our County Council meeting. We're going to begin before our public comment time with a prayer by Mr. Darby and the pledge by Winston Wormin.
If you don't find this sacrilegious to bow, for the purposes we come now and thank you for the many blessings of life, and we ask for your insight, and that we ask that you bless our minds and hearts that we may do the people's business. Amen.
Congratulations to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Madam Clerk, I understand we have a public hearing?
Yes ma'am, notice is hereby given that Charleston County Council will hold a public hearing on the Charleston County Comprehensive Plan Five-Year Review.
Yeah, good evening, Council. We're, the planning department's proud to present the latest iteration of the Comprehensive Plan. So, the Comprehensive Plan is the future vision for preservation and development in Charleston County for the next five to 10 years. It establishes strategies for the county to pursue to maintain and enhance its high-quality and unique landscapes with a focus on strategies that the county can directly influence and achieve. Since its inception, the plan has contained a series of overarching themes that serve as the primary guidance for the recommended strategies and implementation initiatives that include staying the course and building on the past success of the plan, preserving the rural areas of the county, ensuring new development generates revenue equal to the cost of providing new services and infrastructure, conducting detailed land use studies and planning efforts as needed, and establishing work relationships with other jurisdictions and agencies, and ensuring growth occurs within the urban growth boundary where public infrastructure and services exist. In 1994, state law changed to require that jurisdictions with zoning and land development regulations to also adopt comprehensive plans. Charleston County adopted its first Comprehensive Plan on April 20th, 1999. State law requires that comprehensive plans be reviewed at least once every five years and updated at least once every 10 years. The county has completed all required reviews and updates and is now in its third five-year review of the plan. And that 2008 and 1999 with the asterisks beside them shows where we had a consultant. That 2008 version is the version that actually won a state award in the state by the APA for a large jurisdiction planning project, and we've utilized that template that was created with the help of the consultants of 2008 since. Oops, did I go too far? Yep. The five-year review began in 2022, and the initial review of the plan, with the initial review of the plan, staff worked with other departments and agencies to determine what needed to be updated to reflect current conditions. From November 22nd, November 2022 to January 2023, we conducted an initial community survey to gather input on the goals and strategies contained in the plan. The information from the survey was presented to the Planning Commission from February through April of 2023, and the Planning Commission made recommendations on how to address the public input. And on April 10th, 2023, they gave recommendation of approval on the initial draft plan to take to the public workshops. Six in-person public workshops and one virtual workshop were held from June through August of 2023. In September of 2023, staff organized the public input for review for the Planning Commission subcommittees. The subcommittees met between September and November of 2023 and made recommendations regarding how to address the public input in the plan. The subcommittee recommendations were reviewed by the Planning Commission at their December 11th, 2023 meeting, and the Planning Commission made their final recommendation on the five-year review. That was just a little background and update. Andrea Melisick, the deputy director, is going to go through the rest.
All right, good evening. And I'm going to pick up with the public input survey, which was held from November 2022 to January of 2023. The comments from the initial survey included protecting our cultural and natural resources, updating the definition of open space, adding a rural Johns Island overlay district, updating the ZLDR in reference to tree and forest protection, and disallowing certain density on Johns Island and the rural agriculture and rural residential zoning districts, including within planned developments. Staff reviewed each of the public comments and made recommendations to the Planning Commission regarding where and how they could be addressed in the plan during the Commission's initial review of the plan at their February, March, and April meetings of last year. On April 10th, as Joel said, the Planning Commission unanimously voted to recommend taking the proposed amendments to the public workshops for review and comment. The amendments recommended for approval included rewriting the vision statement to make it more concise, updating all of the goals of the elements, amending and adding element strategies, and adding items to the annual work program, as well as updating the definition of open space. Also, as Joel mentioned, the county hosted six in-person public workshops between June and August of 2023, and we had one virtual workshop that was online and open for comment for that entire period. The workshops were held on Johns Island, James Island, West Ashley, Mount Pleasant, North Charleston, and Edisto Island. They are advertised through email blasts, interested parties lists, newspaper ads, press releases, and social media. And this shows one of the flyers that was sent out. A total of 167 people attended the workshops, and we received just under 300 comments. The main themes of the comments are shown here. They're to increase open space clustering and other requirements necessary to achieve higher densities, create safe bike lanes, pedestrian crossings and sidewalks, strengthen the urban growth boundary and concentrate growth in the urban and suburban area, add Seabrook and Kiwa Islands to the list of municipalities to work with in order to strengthen the urban growth boundary, preserve the rural area, include fresh and saltwater wetlands and areas protected within the national resources element, and safeguard rural residential and agricultural communities. The Planning Commission voted to create three subcommittees to review and make recommendations regarding how to incorporate those public comments into the plan. The subcommittees met from September until November of last year. Each subcommittee reviewed comments on three to four of the elements as shown here, and then they developed recommendations for the full commission to consider. At their December 11th meeting, the Planning Commission discussed the subcommittee recommendations and voted unanimously to recommend approval of the five-year review. Only the energy and sustainability element did not receive a unanimous recommendation. It was recommended for approval by a vote of seven to two. The Commission's recommendation included a few amendments that were not proposed by the subcommittees. Those are shown here. They included amending the land use element strategy number four, to include flood elevation as a consideration for land use patterns, to amend the future land use residential densities table to remove the bonus densities that are currently allowed in the Wadmalal Agro Island Agricultural Preservation, Agricultural Preservation, and Rural Agriculture Future Land Use categories, to amend economic development element strategy number nine, to remove the phrase "work with existing industries" to increase the average hourly wages and salaries in the region from the beginning of the strategy, and focus more on working with new industries to ensure that they're paying the wages that are needed to live in the area, and to amend the transportation element to change dollar figures to rounded figures. The Commission also voted for two of the members to draft a proposed forward to be incorporated into the plan. That was to be presented at the January 8th meeting. At the January meeting, a draft forward was presented, however, the Commission voted not to include a forward in the document at all. So now, we're going to start a series of slides that shows all of the recommendations made by the Planning Commission. The proposed deletions will be shown in strike-through text. The proposed additions will be shown in purple italicized text. I'll summarize the proposed amendments as we go through the slides. To begin with, the table of contents and introduction and background sections were updated to reflect current conditions. One of the big things we heard about in the public comments, especially during that initial survey, was about the vision, how wordy it is, and also how outdated it is. So, a new proposed vision statement is shown here in purple italicized text. It does track very well with the county's strategic plan and all of the public comments that we were received. Part three of the plan contains all 11 of the plan elements. The overview purpose and intent, as well as the background and inventory of existing conditions for each of the elements, were updated to reflect current conditions. All of the maps were updated. There are no changes proposed to the future land use map, and ongoing strategies were amended to begin with the phrase "continue to." The land use element goal was amended to focus on resilience and coordination of development with transportation planning. One new need statement and one new strategy are recommended, and these include adapting land use planning and zoning regulations to water systems, and investigating the feasibility of limiting development in areas prone to flooding. The Planning Commission recommended including language from the 2016 Historic and Architectural Survey regarding settlement communities and the description of the urban suburban cultural community protection future land use category as shown here, and this was intended to strengthen and protect the settlement communities. As I noted earlier, the Planning Commission recommended removing the bonus densities that are allowed in the Wadmalal Island Agricultural Preservation, Agricultural Preservation, and Rural Agriculture Future Land Use categories in the rural, in the future land use residential densities table, and that's shown here. So, the higher end of the range is proposed to be deleted for those three land use categories. A section defining overlay zoning districts was added, and the formatting of all of the maps has been updated to become more readable and user-friendly. The amendments to the economic development element include a few new strategies. They are shown here and include continue to encourage and support the Charleston County Economic Development Strategic Plan, to encourage the recruitment of business and industries that pay the wages necessary to afford housing and train residents to obtain higher-paying jobs, and to support multi-county industrial parks, tax increment financing districts, and other economic development tools to fund development of affordable and workforce housing. The natural resources element includes revisions to the goal statement and some of the strategies as shown on this slide. It also includes three new strategies. They are to encourage local sustainable agriculture, to create a countywide approach to reducing light pollution, and to improve connections to the water, sorry, improve connections to the water by way of additional public boat landings and docks. The cultural resources element includes revisions to some of the strategies as shown on this slide and the addition of two new strategies, to coordinate with jurisdictions to pursue grant funding to complete a comprehensive study of historic land and places, and to create a publicly accessible repository of all cultural and historic surveys completed by the county and for development projects within the county. The population element includes amendments to the goal statement and some of the strategies that are shown here. It also includes a new strategy to identify and implement initiatives to retain residents and employees. The housing element includes amendments to the goal statement and two of the strategies that focus on housing affordability, alternative housing types, and proximity of housing to transit options. It also includes three new strategies, to implement the recommendations of the county's housing or future plan, to support state legislation to allow jurisdictions to require the inclusion of affordable and workforce housing in developments, and to identify and implement partnerships and initiatives that provide financial incentives for the development of affordable and workforce housing. The transportation element includes amendments to update the sections on the half-cent sales tax programs as shown here. The language shown here highlights the challenge of lagging infrastructure compared to pace of growth in the county, and the amount of the half-cent sales tax allocations for both CARDA and transit. The additions shown here highlight transportation improvements on Johns Island in the Maybank Highway area. The transportation element also includes amendments to the goal statement focusing on more community input opportunities, increased transit options, and improved pedestrian infrastructure. It also includes amendments to several of the strategies as shown on this slide, as well as the following slide, and two new strategies were added. They are to coordinate transportation plans and projects with adjacent counties and municipalities, and to create an official map showing federal and locally funded roads, along with planned road projects and CARDA projects. Two of the community facilities element strategies were amended, and one new strategy was added, to identify community facility needs in the rural area and implement ways to address those needs. The priority investment element includes amendments to the need statement and goal statement as shown here. It also includes amendments to several strategies focusing on regional coordination, this is strategy four shown here, as well as strengthening the urban growth boundary and promoting resiliency as shown on this slide. One of the biggest changes in the Comprehensive Plan was the update of the annual work plan. We had finished up with a lot of the work plan items from the previous versions of the plan. The new items are shown here. They include reinforcing the location of the urban growth boundary, reviewing the land uses and zoning allowed on Johns Island, to prioritize agriculture, silviculture, equestrian, and other agriculturally related uses, to review and amend the Comprehensive Plan and ZLDR, to increase open space clustering and other requirements necessary to achieve higher densities through the plan development process, to refine the open space definition as it relates to plan developments, and remove conservation subdivision provisions of the ZLDR as they relate to the AG8 zoning district. Also, to review and amend the Comprehensive Plan and ZLDR to prohibit clear-cutting of properties and incentivize the retention of swathes of trees, and to create an official zoning map, or an official map showing federal and locally funded projects, along with planned project, road projects, and CARDA projects. Sustainability was added to the energy element, and the goal statement has been revised accordingly as shown here. In the background section of the element, the language shown here and on the next two slides regarding greenhouse gas emissions and climate system changes has been removed. This language discussing the impacts of greenhouse gas emissions and climate change on human health was removed, as was the language shown here regarding the consideration of the effects of policy on people and the environment. The element need statement was amended, and four strategies were added that support the county's sustainability efforts. They're shown here. The first is coordinate energy reduction and sustainability-related efforts within the county. The second is to identify energy reduction programs and activities that the county can implement to reduce the county's greenhouse gas emissions. The third is to identify activities to reduce landfill emissions from the Viesberry landfill, and the last is to coordinate with CARDA and adjacent jurisdictions to develop a more energy-efficient mass transit system. The resilience element goal statement, needs, and strategies were also updated to reflect the county's resilience efforts as shown on this slide. We had two action items added to strategy number one, which are shown here, to utilize the knowledge gained from the COVID-19 pandemic and to maintain and enhance resilience towards health-related disasters, and to investigate the feasibility of elevation-based zoning, to limit development in areas prone to flooding, and to identify areas more appropriate for increased density based on flood zones. And finally, the definition of open space was revised to be more concise and specific, and also to exclude impervious surfaces. All meetings regarding the Comprehensive Plan Five-Year Review were noticed as required. Since the December 11th, or sorry, yeah, December 11th public hearing, we have received seven letters containing comments regarding flooding issues and resilience, and today we received a petition with 55 signatures. Thank you.
We have four people signed up. The first person is George Freeman, and then Anthony Bryant.
Good evening. George Freeman, 1450 Bowman Road, president of the Community Action Group for Encouragement Organization, short abbreviated in this cage. I'm here this evening to talk on something where I talked to you about before, but it's a simple matter, but it'll have a great impact on the community and the Seven Mile community. And I spoke to Mr. Evans before the meeting, so he's changed what I have to say from what I have to speaking with him. He has given me the understanding that the town of Mount Pleasant is willing to meet with the CAGE organization, and the three of us will get together to discuss the village commercial area in the Seven Mile community where we're talking about reducing that 500 feet that encroaches into the community. So, I'm just going to brief and put it on record that Mr. Evans spoke to me that we're going to meet in a couple of weeks to discuss this. Thank you.
Thank you.
Anthony Bryant, Mike McShane.
Before I speak, I want to give notice that the Attorney General of South Carolina has made post on my Facebook, and the Attorney General of South Carolina handles all criminal investigations, and probably my speech here has been acquired upon as well. But being a Charlestonian that I am, I look forward to whatever challenges he brings before me because I'm a Charlestonian, and that's what I do. Now, let's talk in terms of staff doing a great job on the Comprehensive Plan. I think that, I know many of them for many years while I served on the Board of Zoning Appeals. They're outstanding. What is missing here for them is not to address the public safety question. Now, the state is 36th in public health in the nation in mental and physical care, 42nd in education, and has been in the 40 percentile since I'm 56 for 56 years. And also, we have a lot of other issues as far as things that could not be mentioned, income and race, and the impact of these flooding events on poor people with no flood insurance, and people who've been here forever who can't afford to live here. So, I think that this would be a recommendation from this body to the General Assembly to define growth, clearly define growth, and our staff would be very capable of going before any committee in Columbia, and some of you as well, to have a discussion about can you tell what growth is now? What it was in 1994, and 99, and 2008, and 2023 is completely different. I did not see that this staff has the ability and the capacity to do so, and hope they join, you join them, and other planning commissioners and county board members addressing these longstanding issues.
Thank you, Mr. Bryant.
Mike McShane, Warwick Jones.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman. My name is Mike McShane, a resident of 1501 Ravens Point Road on Johns Island. I'm here this evening representing the Johns Island Task Force. First and foremost, to thank the staff and the Commission for really a very thoughtful deliberation over many months, as you, as you've just recently seen, soliciting that input from various stakeholders, and the process then was very, very supportive of that input. The task force supports the changes on the land use element of the Comprehensive Plan recommended by the staff and the Commission, and therefore solicits council to continue to support that and approve that. It's identified many of those changes will strengthen the urban growth boundary, and as you've heard me say before, this council has really been sensitive to that, and frankly have saved the city of Charleston from itself a number of times based on that. And so, with these changes, I think you continue to bring strength to that, and at times will because some of those changes that you heard reflect in the preservation of the agricultural preservation areas, and that is, plays well with the General Assembly this past week ratifying a Working Farmlands Protection Act that'll actually bring dedicated resources that can be leveraged with your green belt dollars through the Conservation Bank, which for disclosure, I serve on that bank board, to really make an effort of trying to protect those remaining working farmlands that we have in this county. Thank you very much.
Warwick Jones.
Mr. Jones is not asking for any type of preferential treatment, but as a member of the Planning Commission, could you extend him one additional minute, sir?
Certainly.
I mean, in the past, it has gone over before, but as a member of the Planning Commission, sir.
Yes, sir.
At least three minutes, please, sir.
I think so.
Thank you, sir.
It was a yes.
Yes, thank you.
My name is Warwick Jones, 71 Anson Street, Charleston. I ask council to remove the energy element from the comp plan.
Oh, yeah.
Please, the plan is for the county, not for the state or the nation. The state's ordinance does not mandate an energy element, but it mandates that utilities cannot be restricted by a comp plan. Energy generation is dictated by federal and state, not local policy. Counties have virtually no say, so why put the element into the plan? No other county does. The element, as written, endorses the green movement policy. Greenhouse gases cause climate change, so we must eliminate their use. The policy is a theory and not a fact. It does not explain that while carbon dioxide levels remain steady, global temperatures and sea levels leapt over the last 25,000 years as the ice age ended. CO2 clearly was not the cause. The atmospheric concentration of carbon dioxide is one molecule per 2,400 others, that is nitrogen and oxygen. Of methane, one molecule per half a million nitrogen and oxygen molecules. That such low concentration causes climate change is questionable. The element recommends replacement of all fossil fuel electricity generation with wind and solar. This is impractical and foolish. Our state has no significant generation from wind, nor is any likely. Why? It is deemed unfavorable because of the low wind speeds, high costs, and technical problems. That leaves solar.
Continue, continue.
Over a year, we average about five peak hours a day. Some western states enjoy seven to eight peak hours a day. Solar works in South Carolina, but it is more expensive than, say, in New Mexico or Arizona because more capacity is needed. Fossil fuel generation capacity is about 12,000 gigawatts, or half of the state's total. The replacement would cost an estimated eight billion, and note that the major cost of solar is amortization and cost of capital, but it is much more, more than cost. Consider, if solar fully replaces fossil fuel, there will be little or no capacity for generation at night, overcast days, or winter, and there is a land challenge. An estimated 180,000 acres would be need for the solar. The office conclusion is renewable generation needs backup regardless of cost, whatever the capacity of a solar unit. Without sunshine, electricity output is zero. If I just may finish, the other deficiencies of the element, but let me just say that the government, McMaster, recently stated that the state in future would focus on, quote, "additional nuclear power production and natural gas pipeline or generation capacity." This was not mentioned in the element. Thank you very much.
Thank you, sir.
That concludes the public hearing. We have 15 people signed up for public comment.
Thank you.
The first person is Rudeen Washington, followed by Elizabeth Munn, and then Susan Kershaw.
My name is Rudeen Washington. I live at 965 Long Point Road, Mount Pleasant, South Carolina. And let me begin by thanking Charleston County for passing the ordinance that stated that we would not have to annex into the town to receive sewage, but in a meeting yesterday with the gentleman from Charleston County, what he stated was, for any new construction, they don't have that option. They would, if they wanted to build a house, they will have to annex into the town. And you all, your ordinance came out in 2019, their ordinance came out afterwards, and so we're hoping that as a community, you will support us and you will help us not be forced into the town of Mount Pleasant. Have a good evening.
Thank you, ma'am.
Elizabeth Munn, Susan Kershaw, Anthony C. Bryant.
Hi, my name is Elizabeth Munn. I live at 3631 Morris Avenue. It's just on the West Ashley side of the Limehouse Bridge, so I've had the privilege of having that Johns Island address all of my life. I am a member of a garden club on Johns Island, and we care for the butcher oak, which is right there in the corner of Chisholm and Main Road. So, trees are a pretty big deal to me, and I'm here to ask you to really consider keeping the protection available for grand trees. It's my understanding that over 9,200 people have signed petitions or requests to keep those protections available in the review process, and it's been written, and I'm sure you have all heard very, over and over again, that limiting this will change the way Charleston looks, for sure, but it also contributes to flooding, and it contributes to our susceptibility from storms. And as a native Charlestonian, I've seen a few storms in my lifetime, and I don't want to see devastation like that again, and I feel that the more we devalue trees and the more we devalue the way that we maintain our area, it affects our culture, it affects who we are, and in the words of Dorothy, there's no place like home. So, please take care of us. Thank you.
Thank you.
Susan Kershaw, Anthony Bryant, Mary Hatward.
First, I want to thank you all for your work regarding affordable housing. First, I want to thank you all for your work regarding affordable housing. The presentation given last week was really impressive. Thank you especially for setting up the trust fund with the accommodations tax. My name is Susan Kershaw. I live at thirty-six oh five Berry Hill Road on Johns Island. Tonight, you will vote again on the amendments for the tree ordinance. I encourage you to reconsider the process you proposed. A better process would have more public and more widespread input. Tonight, we heard a lot about the county's comprehensive plan. Let's look at the tree ordinance through that lens. An overarching theme, number seven of the plan states, quote, "A commitment to balance social, economic, and environmental considerations is required to achieve the objectives set forth in the plan. The integration of these basic areas of consideration into all development processes, combined with broad public participation in decision-making, is important for achieving resilient development." The transportation element plan aims for, quote, "A public transportation system that is coordinated with land use pattern and community character through a high level of interaction with the community." The priority investment implementation and coordination element states, quote, "Public infrastructure and planning projects shall be prioritized and implemented through active and open coordination with the community." These are just some of the examples how the tree ordinance amendments conflict with the county comprehensive plan. Please reconsider.
Thank you, ma'am.
Anthony Bryant, Mary Howard, Caroline Freidy.
Anthony G. Bryant, President Bryant Group, Inc., P.O. Box two zero three eight four, Charleston County two nine four one three, the Attorney General of South Carolina. I believe in separation of church and state completely. And why? Slavery and Jim Crow. The church sanctioned both. And so therefore, the Attorney General has a flag of a country I will not mention to be respectful. But at the end of the day, what I see happening in Gaza with twenty-some thousand people that's dying, innocent, I can't set aside my concern, being from a people who were humiliated for four hundred and two years. So there's no way I'm going to support any level of human suffering, no matter who does it. So if someone has a problem with that, then arrest me for it. At the end of the day, this is my phone. We talked about human trafficking. We said that human trafficking, the causation of human trafficking is basically poverty. That's the number one reason. The war on drugs is a failure for fifty-some years. I saw the war on drugs fail black people. So why would I say without the causation of the adverse effect? I refuse to sit here and say that ain't real. I told the Attorney General, and opioid addiction. What about crack, reason on crack from nineteen seventy-seven, eighty-six? They ain't say nothing about that. But all of a sudden, opioid is affecting white people, and it's a problem. So I really don't have a problem with the Attorney General wanting to arrest me for something, right? I don't have a problem with it. All my friends have been arrested. I'm not afraid of arrests, observation, surveillance. I've been born in it. I've been born in food deserts. I've been born in justice desert, public safety deserts. I grew up in a desert. I'm not afraid of hell. You put me in it. So I have no problem with this council, any council, calling me out on the issues about what's wrong, what's right, not what's Republican.
Thank you, sir.
Mary Howard, Caroline Freidy, Robbie Mayner.
My name is Mary Howard, twenty-seven sixty Joe Lane on Johns Island. Two things I wanted to address. One was the four A amendment about the works projects and you guys wanting just to let them cut down whatever trees if they just feel it's necessary. If what this other person had said there online, you have over nine thousand signatures on a petition to ask to keep the tree ordinance, I think that's what you should do as a council, is to vote what voters, your constituents here, are asking, is to leave it in place and let them go through the permitting process as they have in the past. The next one, I mean, go back to that. It's not just Johns Island that's going to be affected. It's going to be the whole county, including in Mount Pleasant, such as Highway forty-one, over on Ashley River Road, on Highway sixty-one, Beast Ferry Road. All of that's going to be affected because public works can go in. We don't want that tree. Now we've got permission. Listen to what we as citizens are asking for. The other thing that I would like to address is the Island Park Medical Place. I'm not for it at all, and I'm not sure how true this is, but we have a problem with septic tank business. And from what I understand, there is no sewer line that will be going to this property, and you have this humongous complex that these people want to build, and they're going to put septic tanks in for it? That just doesn't sound right. I may be wrong, but that's my understanding. Thank you.
Thank you.
Caroline Freidy, Robbie Michael German.
My name is Caroline Freidy. I live on twenty-three Ashton Street, and I'm here with the Charleston Climate Coalition. I don't know how much to say, considering that we have time and time again made ourselves explicitly clear regarding the indispensable value of trees to our communities, ecosystems, cultures, and spirits. That is no longer the point. Unfortunately, the point has become not allowing this egregious attempt to consolidate power and remove public input. Allowing the community to participate in the decisions of tree removal with ample public notice is the bare minimum of municipality governance. There must be a system in place that provides people with the space and time to weigh in on specific projects. If it is not the BZA, then it must be others qualified to make ecological judgments and independent from council. I will end on a quote from the comprehensive five-year plan review draft as discussed tonight and contains clear and detailed support for trees. The earth has a finite number of resources, some renewable and some nonrenewable. When resources are overconsumed, the planet becomes unsustainable for current and future generations. For example, cutting down many trees causes increased heat effects and decreases the capture of carbon dioxide, the most common greenhouse gas. Sustainability has impacts on the quality for residents today and in the future. I am simply asking you to do your jobs as public servants and resource stewards by acting with transparency, rightful accountability, and in accordance with the values laid out in the comprehensive plan.
Thank you.
Robbie Mayner, Michael German, Louise Bennett.
Good evening. Thank you for the opportunity to address the council. My name is Robbie Mayner. I direct the Communities and Transportation Program of the Coastal Conservation League located at one thirty-one Spring Street. First, the Conservation League is in full support of Agenda Item Four B, the rezoning of the historic Ten Mile Community. This rezoning is widely supported by residents. It's a crucial step forward in protecting the rural and historic character of this community from increasing growth pressures and provides a way for the community to grow more sustainably while retaining the elements that make it unique. So we appreciate your support of that. Second, we would like to express our continued concern with Item Four A, the amendments to the tree protection ordinance that would remove public participation and independent oversight from the process for all public works projects. After four months of discussion, it's clear that these amendments are being made in anticipation of some potential major highway projects that would destroy hundreds of grand trees, namely the proposed five twenty-six extension and the proposed widening of Bo Hickett Road or Main Road Segment C. Charleston County residents do not support these changes. There are over nine thousand signatures on a citizen-driven petition opposing these amendments. Hundreds have submitted comments, and dozens have spoken against these changes at public meetings over the last four months. Yet these amendments continue to be driven forward by some members of county council. The proposed tree mitigation is a step in a more positive direction, but the omission of a dedicated public hearing from the process would be a disservice to the citizens of Charleston County. We saw two weeks ago that the public comment period is simply not sufficient to allow meaningful public engagement, especially when there are multiple items of interest on a single agenda. County council should welcome public engagement on these critical issues, not seek to limit public involvement. For all these reasons, we encourage members of county council to deny the proposed amendments to the tree protection ordinance and maintain sufficient public engagement and the independent oversight of an independent board, whether that's the BZA or another board for grand tree removal. Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Michael German, Louise Bennett, Sid I Limehouse.
Michael Samuel German, seventeen oh seven Snouton Road, Snouton, South Carolina. First, I want to say the Snouton community stands in solidarity with the Ten Mile Community in their request to have the area zoned to S three. Secondly, I want to do thank the Charleston County and their staff for the ordinance that they passed that states annexation could not be used as a leverage to get sewer service. And at the same time, I want to apologize to Ms. Hamm and the rest of Charleston County for kind of sort of misleading you in terms of the starting date of our sewer project. I learned last night after reading an email that I did receive from the general manager, Alan Clum, in his email, he clearly stated that our sewer project is slated to start on July twenty twenty-four. I apologize.
Can you speak up into the mic?
Can you hear me now? Can you hear me now? Okay. What I was saying, again, a little my time, but I apologize to Ms. Hamm personally because I was kind of bombarding you and everybody else on the start date of our sewer project in Snouton, and the start date per Alan Clum is actually July twenty twenty-four. Now, that being said, I apologize for that, but I am also going to tell you that I'm going to relentlessly continue with updates on our sewer project until the pipes are actually being placed in the ground. Thank you.
Louise Bennett, Sid I Limehouse, Josh Dix.
Thank you, all of you on county council. I appreciate your work and cannot even think about how many hours you put in doing what you do. I could not do it. I am here to speak against the Island Place Medical Center. First, Island Place is too massive in size for this residential community of Johns Island. Parking lots, parking garage, fifteen buildings, medical facilities that are not needed and may, in reality, never be staffed since there is no hospital affiliation. The twelve proposed retail shops to be added to twenty-five or more at Fresh Fields, where most residents do not shop, where two vacancies currently exist, hardly financially feasible. A healthy grocery store, remember, is the shopper who makes the choices of healthy or unhealthy. The most damning aspect of the development is the filling of two acres of wetlands. Wetlands are vital to control flooding, provide wildlife habitat, filter water, and mitigate storm damage. They provide hunting and fishing. They are beautiful. They are the lifeblood of this island. Destruction of wetlands is wrong. They cannot be replaced, neither can this community be replaced. Thank you.
Thank you.
Sid I Limehouse, Josh Dix, Hattie Ori.
Sid I Limehouse, I live within about a hundred yards of this proposed... What'd you call it? But I can't call it a wellness center. It doesn't, you know, it's just, it's like my father used to say, it's too much sugar for five cent. You know, like I said, I live within about a hundred yards of this thing, so I'm concerned with it. I'm concerned about my neighbors. They can't, they won't be able to go in this place because it'd be too expensive. And all this, all this thing does is to run off. And they've been there for a couple hundred years. I just, and I'm... At least I hope that some requirement have to meet with us, and we're going to find out about what they're doing, where they're getting their money from. To say it, but... Local people do not like it. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Josh Dix, Hattie Ori, Craig Askew.
Good evening. Happy New Year. I'll say that. New Year, same problem. I'm from Snouton subdivision, sixteen eighty-four La Troye Avenue, and I sit on my, my home property is about ten acres of property facing Daniel's Island on Foster Creek, for those who know the history. What I wanted to say, I wanted to ask first, an updated financial report, which we were told that we can get as to when the sewer project, Mr. German just stated, July. And I was told that I can get that. I know at this point you spent, we spent something on the about twelve houses that's presently being connected to the existing lines. But my, my street is being bypassed again because what's happening with Water Works, they're jumping, they're selecting certain sections. And we was told last night that it's according to how many houses in the section. But that conversation wasn't had with us, Mr. Sass. The community never sat down with the Water Works, even though we had many meetings, we never discussed, well, which section you're going to do. So again, I'll be bypassed. I won't even get sewer lines because there's nothing on the property according to what's, what's being said. Okay? And I let them know, I think that was something that they should have discussed with the community as to how they're going to proceed. The pump station is on my street, La Troye Avenue. That's the second pump station for the whole community, right in front of my... So those are the two things. The other thing, real quick, the meeting you had yesterday on the proposals for the improvement with the highways and everything, is there any way that Snouton can get maybe four point five more to finish our project? Because we're told that the eight point that was matched or whatever is not enough. So is there any way that we can, some of that money could come to Snouton to get it finished? Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am.
Josh Dix, Craig Askew.
Good evening, council. My name is Josh Dix with the Charleston Trotting Association Realtors, and I'll be real brief, but I just came tonight to say thank you for the work that you're doing on the housing front, creating programs for gap financing, land banking, and the most critical piece, the dedicated funding, that these will keep these programs sustainable going forward. You're making a big impact in people's lives, and just wanted to say thank you for the work that you're doing and continue to keep it up with... work that you're doing and continue to keep it up with the, the housing programs in Charleston County. Thanks.
Thank you, sir.
Chairman. I'm not asking a question in terms of Ms. Ori, but for me to get, for my getting a better understanding, whom would I see or ask to find out what is her problem, how it's going to be resolved? Who would I talk to about that?
Actually, the Water Works has, there are six areas in there that have to get sewer extended to it, and they have to, I don't know which one they, how they choose which one they build first, maybe the lines are built. But we'll need to talk to Ms. Durant and Ms. Smalls, and I will make sure she gets a report, we get a report to y'all about what's been spent.
Again, I'm not asking, but I just don't understand why her place there would be overlooked as opposed to why it wouldn't be done, sir. That's all.
Yeah, I don't know. They have to connect those areas together, those sewer lines, and they probably have to do it in a certain order, but I don't know.
So I need to speak to Ms. Durant and Ms. Smalls?
Yes, sir. Or Ms. Smalls.
Wow.
Craig Askew, Ashley Demostanes.
And we will ask, we will talk to Mount Pleasant, we will talk to Mount Pleasant and find out.
You're an expert on everything now.
Good evening. My name is Craig Askew. I live at 987 Gadsenville Road. Thank you all again. You guys take a lot of impact from the public and impact from your families and time away from families, and I thank you all for what, what you do. I'm here tonight to say again that I support Ten Mile rezoning from R4 to S3 without exemption. I oppose the amendments to the zoning and land development regulation ordinance that remove tree protection and remove public input. I oppose the amendments to the Historic Preservation Ordinance, the HPO, and related zoning and land development regulations. I support aspects of the comprehensive plan of the five-year review, specifically placing emphasis on protection of unique character of Low Country African-American settlement communities. I support the comprehensive land goals that protect land use element, cultural resources, and how, and the housing elements. And as I've sat here tonight, I hear a lot of people here, local people, who want their local properties protected, and they're depending on you guys. So all those here, would you please raise your hand if you're local and you're looking for your own land and tree protection? Thank you very much. Thank you, council, for what you guys do.
Thank you.
Ashley Demostanes, and then the last person's David Quick.
Good evening, everybody. My name is Ashley Demostanes. I'm the president and CEO of Low Country Land Trust. We're at 635 Rutledge Avenue, and I come with great news. First, I want to thank you all for your leadership, but I really want to thank you all for your support of a very special project, and that is the Sea Island Small Farmers Co-op Project. This property will be transferred to Charleston County Parks and Recreation Commission before your next county council meeting next month. This is a project that was supported through the Charleston County Green Belt Program and one that is, I know, very close to many of you serving on council. I'd like to specifically thank Councilman Darby and Councilman Pryor for introducing Mike McShane to Mr. Inabinit before he passed in order to effectuate this project, which is going to become an incredible community asset on the Wallace River, open to the public. The Low Country Land Trust will hold a conservation easement on this property, and I just want to thank you all for your support of this particular project and for the Green Belt Program in general. Thank you so much for your leadership and support.
The last speaker is David Quick.
My name is David Quick, and I live at 1502 Village Square in Mount Pleasant, and I'm here yet again to oppose changes to the tree ordinance, which basically will weaken it and cause the destruction of a lot of trees. A lot of, a lot of us has been here a lot over the past few months, as there's been this nifty little shell game, going back and forth between Planning Commission and you guys, canceling at one time, and so here we are. You all want to basically remove the public hearing part where as many people who want to speak can speak and put it on public comment. A perfect example, I came here five minutes early, 7:25, 6:25. I was the 16th person, luckily I had one person not show up, so I got to speak. So if there are any, if you all are now taking charge of deciding whether the trees are saved or not, we're going to all have to rush here like, you know, 30 minutes in advance to maybe get 15 people to speak, as opposed to as many people as possible. I'm a firm believer of, you know, freedom of speech and balance of power in our government. I think at this point, go back to the original plan to let board zoning appeals. I want to leave you with something not quoted from your comprehensive plan, but particularly for those who are more interested in satisfying the Chamber of Commerce and the Realtors in the, in the county. There's a Native American proverb, only when the last tree has been cut down, the last fish has been caught, and the last dream has been poisoned, will we realize we cannot eat money.
Sir. Is that it? Thank you. Okay. Thank you all very much. I'm going to call this county council meeting to order. First item is Freedom of Information Act.
In compliance with the Freedom of Information Act, notice of meeting was posted and agendas were distributed to news media and persons requesting notification.
Thank you. Next item, minutes of January 30, 2024, moved by Reverend Middleton, seconded by Ms. Honeycutt. Any additions, deletions, changes?
To the clerk and her staff.
Commendations.
Thank you.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it. Thank you very much. We're going to move number, item eight up to this point of the, of the meeting. Planning and Public Works Committee recommendations, Island Park Place Medical Village. Ms. Honeycutt, would you handle this part of the meeting since I have to recuse myself?
Yes, sir. Do I have a motion on item 8A?
Move for Planning Commission Recommendation.
Which was also what came out of committee last week, that is, the committee recommendation. Go ahead. Is there a second? It's been properly moved and seconded, Mr. Pryor.
Is the, is the motion included in there to waive the one-year waiver as well as the, any, any fees? Is that included in the motion or?
It was two separate motions in committee. It's one on this agenda.
It's a second motion, but it's not on, on, on the agenda, right? The second motion that I made.
That was the committee recommendation.
What was, can you read what the committee recommendation is?
Was to disapprove the plan development request and to waive the one-year waiting period and the fees.
The motions are combined from committee, and that's what's before us.
I would like to separate them because my motion was separate.
Okay.
So let's go down to the first one, and then my motion was separate.
I would allow for that.
All right. So on the table that's been properly moved and seconded was a motion to approve the committee recommendation, which was to deny approval of this application. That's what came out of committee. It does not include the waiver of one year, and so we'll take up the first motion. Is there any further discussion on item 8A?
Roll call.
Oh, please.
Mr. Boykin?
Aye.
Mr. Darby?
Aye.
Mrs. Honeycutt?
Aye.
Mr. Kabrowski?
Aye.
Mr. Middleton?
Nay.
Mr. Moody, Mr. Moody's abstaining. Mr. Pryor?
No.
Mr. Warman?
Nay.
Mr. Sass is abstaining. The motion passes with four ayes, three nays, and two abstentions.
Pryor, is there a motion on item 8B?
Yeah, it's a motion that I made. Mr. Sass, I think you had that before you, right?
Yes, sir.
So move for committee recommendation on that motion.
Is there a second? It's been moved and properly seconded. Any further discussion?
Roll call, please.
Can we get a roll call, please?
Mr. Boykin?
Nay.
Mr. Darby?
Aye.
Mrs. Honeycutt?
Nay.
Mr. Kabrowski?
Nay.
Mr. Middleton?
Aye.
Mr. Pryor?
Aye.
Mr. Warman?
Aye.
Motion passes with four ayes, three nays, and two abstentions.
All right. That leaves it back to you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, ma'am. Chairman. Yes, sir. On item 3A, I move to approve committee recommendation with the effective start date of mid-March the 8th, 2024.
Can you read that out again just for transparency and for us all to be on the same page? What the, what the recommendation is?
Yes, sir. Hang on one second. Okay. The committee recommended that council increase the annual leave accrual rate for full-time county employees working an 80-hour pay period to a total of 120 hours per year from the start of employment until through their ninth year. The annual leave accrual rate for employees working other schedules will be proportionally increased, and increase the sick leave accrual rate for full-time county employees working an 80-hour pay period to a total of 160 hours per year. The sick leave accrual rates for employees working other schedules will be proportionally increased, with the understanding that these actions will be effective for the pay period starting March 8th, 2024. Okay. That's it.
Question?
It's been moved and seconded now. Any questions?
I have one. I just want to, again, for clarification, this has nothing to do with the parental leave, which we have passed. This is something additional. I was very proud that we passed the parental leave. I thought that was something that we did for sacred duty to promote parents and children. This is something different, and I just wanted to make that clear, and I would vote differently than I did before, and I just wanted clarity, and you've given it to me. Thank you.
Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Nay.
The ayes have it. Item number four, second reading ordinances, VLDR amendments. Public Works Project Exemptions, Article 3.7 and Article 9.2, ordinance second reading.
And ordinance amending the Charleston County Zoning and Land Development Regulations Ordinance, number 1202, as amended, to exempt the South Carolina Department of Transportation and Charleston County Public Works projects approved by county council from certain tree protection and preservation requirements at the following document locations, Chapter 3 Development Review Procedures and Chapter 9 Development Standards. Mr. Boykin?
Aye. Can we have a discussion first?
Yes. Yes, sir.
Okay. Well, thank you. I just would like to say I strongly oppose this in the strongest possible way, and we have everybody that signed up to speak tonight, and on the official document of the Charleston County Council, it defines the difference so that everybody voting on this and the public knows what we would give up. It says that Charleston County Council provides a public comment period prior to each regularly scheduled county council meeting. It says you acknowledge that this is a limited public forum, and it's limited to the 15 first, the first 15 people to sign in. That's who it's limited to. You heard eloquent testimony from Mr. Quick, what that's like. You've heard many different people. To have the first 15 sign up in a very limited public forum is not something that is the same. This is how it defines a public hearing regarding, this is the direct language of what a public hearing is, and everybody listening, everybody voting should know what the public would be giving up. It says regarding public hearings, comma, county council will not limit, I'll repeat, will not limit the number of people who wish to address the body on the specific matter related to the hearing. Public hearings provide citizens with the opportunity to ask questions and give their opinion on specific council items. I'll repeat that. Public hearings provide citizens with the opportunity to ask questions. So before tonight, you still have the right, and something that many people consider central to what makes Charleston Charleston, an unlimited amount of people can address us, and they can ask questions and engage in a conversation. That's what a public hearing does, and we would vote to give up. You know, at some point, you know, I've lived here for decades, I've seen the landscape change, I'm here for a limited time, I'll be back where you are, whether three years, eight years, whatever it is, and, you know, I'll be back with you, wanting to speak and communicate. The people here will all be different, but if we vote to do this, we'll eliminate forever, and the less people are replaced to vote on it, the right for the people to speak on something. And we all see how the public changes, and one of us brought up, you know, where I live on Solvance Island, as a way that I shouldn't be able to vote. I'd like to just briefly address that, and in fact, that brings up why I'm here. We had the same argument on Solvance Island about a maritime forest. I mean, we're not, shouldn't be driven by developers and contractors. We have the right to, you know, I bought my house there for $96,000. The fact that people have come and bought homes for five or six million doesn't help me. This makes my property taxes go higher. That's my community, it's not a commodity. And we fought the same economic interest that wanted to tear down our trees so they would have a better view, and the property values go up. It's the same reason to get ready for 526 that they want to give up the public hearing, they don't want the input. If some of us are representing contractors and fiercely represent them and help them navigate the rules that regulate them, they shouldn't vote on this. And I ask us not to give up the right for a public hearing.
Finish, Mr. Kabrowski?
Yes, sir.
Yes, sir. Just want to ask a question to Mr. Thigben. Well, it's losing the tree protection.
Mr. Pryor, removing a tree is the last thing Water Works wants to do. We try to design around them best we can. Unfortunately, there are situations that we just can't get around trees, and this, that'd be the only opportunity, but we will explain all that to council as we present these issues to council, asking for that permission.
It would have to come back to council. Ma'am, you had your chance to speak. So it would have to come back to council, you know, I keep hearing from the audience, there is no protection in placement. Council gets to make the final decision.
My understanding is that what the BZA, the decision process the BZA would make would be now in the hands of county council.
Okay. And Mr. Kabrowski, when you say this could be forever, past council can't buy a future council. So if a new council wants to come in and change ordinance, they have a right to. So I want to make, to put that on the record, it's not forever.
Yes, sir. I stand corrected on that. I meant as, unless and till revoked, and unless people replaced to vote for it. Thank you.
And also, Mr. Chair, is it not, I do apologize, Ms. Honeycutt, if, if she's, you know, recognized prior to me, I would yield to Ms. Honeycutt.
I just wanted to make another comment about this because we keep hearing this refrain that is absolutely false, and our current ordinance already addresses this. DOT has a complete exemption to our tree ordinance. 526 is a DOT project. This has nothing to do with 526, and whatever trees are impacted, DOT has the right to address. So just want to make that clear to the public. It was also stated earlier.
Mr. Warman?
Mr. Chairman, you know, I guess one thing I would say, and to follow on with Mr. Kabrowski's comments, who I think laid out pretty clearly the difference in the two processes that are being discussed here, you know, why that is important to me, and I hope to others on this council, is that the real justification for moving this from BZA to council, in my view, is that the BZA is sort of more of a judicial body, this is more of a legislative body. Sure, there are certainly times where, you know, there's competing public interests, you can imagine safety or efficiency could go up against, you know, conservation and tree preservation, but tree preservation is certainly a weighty issue in this, in this county. It not only has environmental, you know, benefits, it's, it's a, you know, there's a cultural element to this. So, you know, I, I'm fine, actually, with, with moving that so long as the same scope of review is, is applied, and I incorrectly, I was incorrect, I do think it is the same scope of review. I just think that if the reason is that this body is sort of better positioned to weigh competing public interests, then, you know, more public input kind of goes along with that. So that's, that's why I would support, you know, certainly the public hearing rather than the public comment version of this.
Mr. Chair.
Mr. Boykin? I'm sorry.
He was ahead of me. I also wanted to just clarify, even with this coming to council as a legislative body, there would also be public notice by virtue of the fact that it would appear on an agenda. Individuals could still come in and comment on public comment. Individuals could still come in and comment on public comments, or whatever the case is, voice their concern to this body, you know, void BZI, and they would have that opportunity, you know, to articulate. They could write in, they can call, they can come in, and that can still be on the record and heard. Is that still a part of that process?
Yes, sir, that's my understanding.
And as I heard earlier, as it related to, you know, the two minutes that people are allowed to speak, if that is something, you know, certainly there are many things that many of us, you know, you know, champion for change on this council, you know, take that up with the Administrative Policy and Rules Committee and see if that's something that you want to extend it from two to five, you want to extend it from 15 to, you know, an infinite number of individuals. But there is a council procedure, if a council person wants to champion that, and I've done it on several things, and took it through the process, and eventually some of those things made it. So there is a way for us to address policies that we feel that are antiquated or don't match up with what, you know, the, with the Freedom of Information Act, whatever, you know, the statements that are read, then challenge it through administrative policies and rules.
Chairman. Thank you, hold on. Mr. Boykin was next.
Yes, one of the points that I see really hitting home here tonight is access. It's the ability to be heard. Coming and speaking at a public hearing is not the only means of communication available to all of our constituents. Lord knows with the Medical Village and the state, I'm sorry, the Coastal Carolina Fair and many other things, we have been inundated with hundreds, if not thousands, of emails, text messages, phone calls, my phone number and my home address, and my email address is available to every constituent I have, and I'm sure y'all's are as well. And I read my emails, I take my phone calls, and I take my texts. It doesn't have to all be funneled through one way of communication.
Thank you, sir. Mr. Kowalski?
Middleton said, I'd like to amend the motion then to include that public hearings on trees.
Well, we can amend it here tonight, but you can take it to the Administrative Policy and Rules Committee.
Okay, but the bottom line is, we would end the right to have interactive discussions on this. We would have a limited public hearing, I mean, comment, 15 people limited, it would not be the same, and we all know that. We'd be giving up something that most people hold dear, and one said, it's not about the money. We love living here for many reasons, and this would be making it much easier to eliminate what most of us, you know, love living about here. And it's very important that we maximize and allow the public to be heard. This would be a vote to limit that. I read the rules right now. There's, as of now, the people have a right to have public interaction, ask questions of us at public hearing. And I find it very unsettling that some of the same people who led the thing for, against the medical plaza, which I was also against, had a very dynamic public hearing where everybody came out to speak on that because it was important to them. This is important not just to them, but everybody in Charleston County. They have the same right to be heard, and something that's very important to all of us, wherever we live, that you had in your district, to be heard, and something important to you. And I don't want that taken away from anybody in Charleston County, and we would vote to do that.
Thank you, sir. Mr. Darby?
I didn't go to hog or yield, I just, I didn't go, but I think I have basic reading. It says regarding public hearings, county council, pardon my reading, very slowly, some of us slow to understand, will not limit the number of people who wish to address the body on the specific matter related to the hearing. That's what it says.
That's how we do public hearings, we do. That's different than public comment.
Yes, I understand.
Yes, sir.
But based upon, people are limited to certain minutes.
People, not the time.
Public comments is limited to 15 people, public hearings is...
Well, also, I must add now to my colleagues, now you all just get upset now, but if a council person wished to speak, irrespective of longevity, he or she has that right. I'm just going to say, he or she has the right to say what they want to say, or he or she, because he or she fights for his community as well as you fight for yours. And I don't think it's fair that when we go try to hush one member of council, I, I don't think anyone has that within their right. And I think we need to act more professional than that. If someone goes on and on, he or she is here to speak on behalf of their constituents. And I think it's very unsettling when we're going to allow someone to tell, who is not a chairman, to say, you need to stop talking. I just don't think that's professional, sir. That's, that's all I'm saying.
I try to make sure that everybody gets to speak.
Absolutely, sir, absolutely.
Yes, sir.
Briefly, having been on the BZI for four years, those folks are limited to two minutes each when they speak for the BZI. So it's not, we, that wouldn't be any different here in the sense of the time that whoever spoke, spoke.
Is there any further discussion? Mr. Moody?
Call the question, please. No question, I'm sorry.
Mr. Boykin, I have you as an aye. Mr. Darby?
This is for?
This is for the exemption for public works for the tree ordinance.
Uh, nay.
Yes, sir. Mrs. Honeycutt?
Aye.
Mr. Kowalski?
Nay.
Mr. Middleton?
Aye.
Mr. Moody?
Aye.
Mr. Pryor?
Aye.
Mr. Warman?
Nay.
Mr. Sasse?
Aye.
The ordinance passes second reading with six ayes and three nays.
Yes, sir. Most of us keep saying, trust staff, you know, they're the professionals. When staff comes up with a recommendation, then, you know, we hold them a different standard. So we can't trust staff on some things and then beat up on, on other things. That's just my opinion from what I'm seeing there. Staff made a recommendation, I'm sure staff did that based on what they thought was best for the county. And the misinformation about, you're just going to go and just got out trees, that's not true. Okay? There's a process in place, you know, and instead of going to the BZI, it's going to come back to the policymakers now. We are the policymakers. BZI, Planning Commission, they are recommendation boards. Many times they have come with recommendation, and we have override, overwritten their recommendation. And so it's not like this is the end of the world, because it's not. We elected by the public to make these decisions. So if we disagree with planning, or the BZI, you know, but what we are setting up or what was in place is something to sue each other. The BZI can come back and then say, well, I don't like the county council, now we suing each other, government entities wasting the taxpayers' dollars. And so I still say, I don't believe nobody on this staff would just go move a tree to put a rule there. I, I just don't, and I'm not going to let staff be beat up by the public like that, or any council member saying that's what staff is going to do, but the, the theory of this is for 526. This has nothing to do with 526, because this, 526 is a state project, not a county project. And we are the one, I guess, one of the only ones in the, in, in, in the state that allows us to go to BZI, because most of them just, it comes to council. So I don't think, you know, Mr. Kowalski, then nobody's trying to get, or stop nobody from doing anything. I think what we're saying is, take it to staff.
As Mr. Darby said, I hope I don't get stopped to talking. I don't work for the staff, I work for the public. The trees belong to the public, they don't belong to the staff. The public has the right to speak about what they love and what's in the community. And that's what we're denying them, the right to have a public hearing, to have interaction with us. We're limiting now, they have an unlimited right for everybody who wants to come now, and we're taking that away. Yes, we have staff, but I'm here to represent the people. I don't represent the staff, and I don't work for them, I work for the people that live here. And we're about to take something away, and it is that, and I think we're often driven by development and interest in those who, who represent the developers and contractors. I don't represent them, I represent the people who spoke here, and at some point I'll be back there.
Kowalski, I would like to reach out an olive branch, another tree of sorts, and recommend, I would be happy to draft a policy amendment to our rules that would carve out a specific exception, just like Mr. Reverend Middleton was talking about, that we could consider about maybe providing some additional, additional time. It's just, I did, did not think that was appropriate amendment to make in this, that is a rules change. But I'd be happy to, to work on that with you.
Also, Mr. Chair, if I may, Mr. Kowalski, I was offering that because when I came on council, there were many rules and practices that seemed antiquated to me, you know, personally, and I thought that maybe we should update some of them. And so there's a process for those things, and I was simply adding that, you know, just as a point of order, so that as we advocate for certain things, go through the process that enables the change. And sometimes it takes a long time, because there were some things I've, I've advocated for that took forever. But it came about, but you have to go through the proper council committee or oversight body.
Well, I thank you both for that, but to me, it's like deja vu over again. The very reason I'm on here, what led me was our fight to save the maritime forest on Solvance Island from the town council that I hear the same thoughts and driven by the same passions that we fought there. When the people wanted one thing, and the council voted something else, and I respectfully say to the public, I feel that's what's happened here. Thank you for your comments, so, thank you, sir.
And Ms. Honeycutt, I would be happy to work with you on that.
Thank you, Reverend Middleton.
If, you know, you need someone else to co-sign.
Thank you. Next issue, 4B, S3 rezoning for 10 Mile Community, R4 and UR parcels, ordinance second reading.
An ordinance rezoning all real properties located within the urban suburban area of the 10 Mile Community Historic District and currently zoned low-density residential R4 or urban residential UR zoning districts to the special management S3 zoning district with the right to amend up to third reading. Mr. Boykin?
Aye.
Mr. Darby?
Aye.
Mrs. Honeycutt?
Aye.
Mr. Kowalski?
Aye.
Mr. Middleton?
Aye.
Mr. Moody?
Aye.
Mr. Pryor?
Aye.
Mr. Warman?
Aye.
Mr. Sasse?
Aye.
Ordinance passes second reading with nine ayes.
Number five, committee recommendations, first reading ordinances.
For approval, all three, I know we got to read each one.
Second.
Moved and seconded, Ms., Madam Clerk, building better, building ordinance revisions grant, request to approve.
Yes, sir. Do you, you need to vote on those first? Yes, sir.
Okay. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it, thank you.
Sure, okay, so, an ordinance amending Chapter 4 of the Code of Ordinances Charleston County entitled Buildings and Building Regulations, and Chapter 8 of the Code of Ordinances Charleston County entitled Fire Prevention and Protection. An ordinance authorizing the conveyance of real property located at 1316 Garrison Street totaling approximately 0.37 acres, parcel identification number 4310200062, to Narrow Gate Development. And an ordinance authorizing the conveyance of real property located at 27 Bishop Drive totaling approximately 0.35 acres, parcel identification number 3551400089, to Charleston Habitat for Humanity.
Thank you, ma'am. Number six, consent.
Committee recommendations, I'd say through D.
Second.
Moved by Mr. Moody, seconded by Reverend Middleton. Any questions or additions? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it. Thank you. Finance committee recommendations.
Approval of 7A through D.
Moved by Mr. Pryor, seconded by Mr. Moody. Any questions? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it, thank you very much. Council comments? Reverend Middleton?
None tonight, thank you very much, Mr. Chair, and certainly wishing a happy Valentine's Day to all of the women in Charleston County government, and certainly just highlighting Black History Month and the achievements of African-Americans in Charleston County, the nation, and the world.
Thank you, sir. Mr. Moody?
Nothing.
Mr. Darby?
I just want to thank Mr. German, who has steadily, year after year, seen fit to make sure that his community is treated fairly. I, I don't know where he got his education, I think he went to the military. But too often, middle-class blacks, they leave the stench of the backwaters of the black community and start sailing down the freshwater of mainstream America, forgetting about the community which they came from. So I just want to say, Mr. German, to others, thank you for coming back, and I appreciate the education and military experience that you've procured over the years to assist your community, because too many who look like you and me get the education, they leave us, and form a brain drain, sir. So hats off to you and every other African-American who really have, have done well, and yet come back home to say, I'm going to stay here, and I'm going to help the community. Because we always blaming other folk for our problem, blaming other folk, and that's not always the case. My hat's off to you, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Darby. Mr. Kowalski?
I'd like to thank Mr. German too for the persistence that he's come out and the eloquent voice he has for his community. I'd also like to thank all those who came to oppose the development of their community on Vetsi Garrison Drive for the medical pauses, they came out and did their job. I'd also like to thank the trees in Charleston County. I'm sorry we lost the right to have public hearings on something that for all of us who've lived here a long time have noticed every year and all the time diminishing, we're seeing in real time how that happens. And at some point, I'll be back where you are, coming to try to make comments. And I won't have that right now that we had before tonight. And I'm sorry we lost that fight. I continue to ask you to participate and, and fight for that. And I asked, we have, and we heard eloquent voices, I heard Mr. Askew tonight talking about, we, we voted one good thing tonight for zoning for the 10 Mile Community, but we still have the Historic Preservation Commission issue coming up. And I listened intently to the five-year plan, it says protecting our cultural and natural resources to remote and preserve unique character and landscapes of the county. All the things that the Historic Preservation Commission does now, and if we vote as it appears, we're going to change that irrevocably, we won't be preserving the unique cultural residential patterns in the history of Charleston County, and we'll lose what's, part of what's unique and historic about in Charleston County of who we are, that generations have lived and died for, and, and lose. And I also want to thank that the, in commemorate again, George Washington's birthday is coming up. He was born on February 11th in 1731, according to the Julian calendar, but Britain and the colonies then adopted the Georgian calendar, so the actual birthday is February 22nd. And from my perspective, as the, I know we all have different backgrounds and heritages, but as the grandson of immigrants who provided us life and freedom, that we live, in my opinion, the greatest country that's ever existed, and gave us a life and opportunity. And George Washington was the founding father, the commander in chief of our military, the first president, who refused to be a king. And we are now, as a result of what he did many years later, the greatest country, in my opinion, in the history of the world. And it's never wrong to honor him for that. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Warman?
Chairman, shift gears a little bit here, and I think I said this on Thursday, but I do just want to take a moment to pause, thank this council, thank our chairwoman of the Special Housing Committee, Ms. Honeycutt. Especially thank our staff, Ms. Durant, Ms. Smalls, and everyone who's worked so hard on the housing issues that all of us have been striving, striving hard, I think, to, to try and find ways to, to address. You know, I said it's a serious crisis, we're fighting it on a lot of different fronts. I'm really excited to see how some of those develop, and I think we've shown some, some serious progress and a lot of public capacity to take on these challenges with the gap financing that we've done thus far. And I'm thrilled to, to see this major step forward for the trust fund, so just really excited and wanted to re-thank everyone for that. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Pryor?
Just a few, Mr. Darby, I concur with everything you say with Mr. German. But I also want to say he had the courage to come and apologize to Ms. Hamm publicly. He could have done it over the telephone, and we never would have known. So kudos to you, Mr. German, for that. And, you know, I want to thank Ms. Durant and Ms. Smalls, and, you know, the attorney and the staff, you know, for taking us as far in the housing initiative, because some of our biggest critics, including the paper now, some of our biggest champions, you know, now that they see what we are doing, and we are committed to what we are, truly we're trying to do. And I say again, anything that we have left, I don't want to send it back, I want to use it. Critical care, repairs, or something good, and it's worked, and I think, you know, that keeps people in their homes, to keep them from being, you know, put out. I pass by a house every day, look like if, if I was, it's going to collapse. And, you know, it's hard, but that's all they have. So if somehow, some way, we can keep those folks, you know, from losing what they have, that's a sign of, to me, affordable housing. So again, thank you, and thank staff, you know, and thank Mr. Tooten for what he's doing.
Mr. Boykin?
I just want to first say that I'm happy to throw my support behind the collaboration of Reverend Middleton and Councilwoman Honeycutt on the rules of, to provide some further opportunities for folks to speak on the tree ordinance. for folks to speak on the tree ordinance. And I would like to wish my dearly beloved bride and love of my life, Lisa, a very special Valentine's Day.
Yes, I also want to say thank you to our team, Community Development, who's been working really hard. We're making tremendous amount of progress. Also want to throw out a huge thank you to our Transportation and Public Works staff who have been at meetings, week after week after week now. And, and we really appreciate the effort, the responsiveness to all of the feedback. We've been literally, each meeting, we learn something new and you guys adapt and bring signs out pointing to where to walk in the door or park or anything with it we've asked. So appreciate all the time and effort that you've put into providing a public process for that feedback. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Darby, you have something?
That's an oversight, sir. I'm so happy to see Mr. Randolph and his wife, hadn't seen him a number of years, I think. You know, he's a celebrity in his own right and sad to say, however, they just lost their son in January. So hearts and prayers out to you, but thank you, so good to see you again, Mr. Randolph.
And he's a good DJ too, Mr. Randolph. If you need a DJ, call Randolph.
Thank you, sir.
Mr. Administrator? Ms. Hamm? I'd like to say that I appreciate the job everybody's done to get us to this point on the housing. Y'all have done an incredible job. Ms. Honeycutt, you have too, and everybody's worked hard. We've got a lot of things done. We got the leave set up, we got this set up. These are important.